Okay, you all set to record?
Recording in progress.
Yes, we're recording.
And thank you for your drive by.
You're very welcome.
All right, it is seven o'clock. Good evening, my name is Peter Basserman, I am Chairman of the Branford Inland and Watercourses Commission. It is seven o'clock on September twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, we are having a regularly scheduled meeting of the Branford Inland and Watercourses Commission. The meeting is being conducted in accordance with Public Act twenty-two dash three using the Zoom platform. Uh, BCTV is recording this evening. Uh, please um make sure that you're front and center when speaking. Uh, the agenda for tonight's meeting was filed on September twenty-fourth. Uh, that replaces the draft agenda uh of nine twenty twenty-four. Uh, they are on the town's website and the uh uh agenda for this evening uh is available using uh the information contained uh on the meeting notice. Then the Dropbox access is listed on the agenda. Uh, the, let's see, does the town staff have any changes or updates through this evening's agenda?
No.
All right, I'll do a um roll call for this evening's meeting. Commissioner Boda.
Commissioner Boda, present.
Commissioner Goklowski.
Commissioner Goklowski, present.
Commissioner Papitonas.
Commissioner Papitonas, present.
Commissioner Minson.
Commissioner Minson, present.
Commissioner Ormrod.
Commissioner Ormrod, present.
And for staff, uh, we have Jamie Frederick, Inland Wetland Director.
Present.
And Inland Wetland Associate Katie Blanchett.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum for this evening's meeting. All Commissioners uh in attendance are uh encouraged to participate and all are available to vote. First on the agenda is the minutes from September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, regular meeting. It's been a while since we've had a uh page double sided minutes. I have a motion to approve those.
Commissioner Goklowski, I will make a motion to approve those minutes from September twelfth's meeting.
And is there a second?
Commissioner Ormrod, I'll second that.
Any discussion or changes? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And abstention?
Abstain. Commissioner Papitonas abstain.
Was that a abstention, Commissioner Boda, or was that just a, you're here?
Uh, Commissioner Boda abstention, and I I think Commissioner Minson also said said something, maybe an abstention.
Yep, Commissioner Minson abstain.
Okay, you have all that, Katie?
I sure do.
Great. Okay. First up for review application inland weather twenty-four oh eight oh two, one ninety-five Cherry Hill Road Extension. New single family home with an in-ground pool. Jamie?
Uh, Jamie Frederick, Inland Agent, uh, at the last meeting, I had asked if the commission was okay with me approving this administratively, um, if I felt comfortable doing so. Uh, little bit further review of the drain, proposed drainage and conversation with the town engineer. Uh, I thought it was appropriate for the commission to take a quick look at things because drainage is being sent in slightly different directions, um, in part. Um, so the project engineer is here to go over that for you. Um, and I also have prepared a staff report based on my review of the application. Um, so I guess unless there's any questions upfront, I would hand it over to the applicant.
Sounds like a plan.
Um, Zach, would you like me to screen share or would you like to screen share?
I'll screen share since I'm talking, I might as well drive, right?
All right, let me make sure you're, yep, you should be good to go.
Okay, and we want to share screen two. Okay, just before I start, want to make sure everybody can see what we're looking at, we should be looking at the site plan, correct?
Yep, I see it.
Fantastic, okay, um, so just real quick, want to go over what current, what was out there, what's currently out there and what we're proposing. So, um, what you're seeing here uh for sheet one is the survey for this as it stood during the subdivision approvals. This is two thousand twenty-one in terms of the actual survey data. It's currently under construction, so things are a little bit mobile, but uh what was there was field grass from a old farm field, uh, some emerging brush and some established woods. Um, of note, there was one sizable uh willow tree along the northeast corner between uh fourteen and twelve Autumn Ridge Drives property lines. Uh, there were some apparent incursions um from fourteen, uh, such as a fence, some landscaping and a shed uh that was addressed through the subdivision approval process with that neighbor and has since been corrected. Uh, currently, uh, obviously, the the right of way itself is under construction, so there has been some clearing and earthwork along the front of the property in the right of way. Um, there has been some additional clearing done along this fence line for fourteen to allow for the relocation and landscaping planting that was required through the subdivision approval. Uh, and some portions of the site along the southwestern corner have been utilized for stockpiles at various points. But otherwise, there's still sizable brush area, uh, emerging field grass and all of the woods in the rear remain intact. So that's what's was out there, what's currently out there, and now let's go into what we're proposing here. Um, so during the subdivision, we had used essentially model placeholder homes to develop the subdivision. Um, using the surrounding properties, we'd assume these to be i- in the two thousand to three thousand five hundred square foot range. Uh, the home that is being put on, put on here by the proposed buyer uh is about forty-three percent larger than what we had used. So because it's a larger home, uh, all of the stormwater assumptions we had made need to be uh amended, so to speak. Uh, so to do that, I'm going to just jump.
Those, excuse me for interrupting, this is Commissioner Boda, can you enlarge your screen? Even when I enlarge my screen, everything is super pixelated.
Better?
Yeah, thank.
Okay, thank you for the feedback. Um, so the actual dwelling here, and I'll just outline it with the cursor a little slowly, is about forty-three percent larger than what we had used as our placeholders. Um, originally, we had proposed that the entire um building was roof leaders are going to be collected and essentially brought into the public right away and down into the basin on lot seven, not to rehash the whole uh history there, but that had been the plan. Since we have a forty-three percent increase in area of the building, we need to address the stormwater. In addition to that, uh, we had not accounted on the potential buyer wanting a pool, and so we have had to address the thirty by eighteen pool that he's requesting to put into the backyard uh in terms of storm, stormwater offset. So if we move on to our stormwater plan, which should be sheet four. So what we have come up with is essentially trying to keep as much of the original intent while mitigating obviously the increased flow and volume from the larger house. Um, so previously, the house uh in the southwest corner had a roof leader line going directly into the catch basin within the right of way, and I'll zoom in a little bit more here, just so what we're specifically looking at. So essentially, coming from this corner of the house directly to the catch basin. Um, because of the increase, we have to not only infiltrate some water, uh, because we have to address just the increased volume. We also need to address the peak flows. Uh, to do this, we are proposing installing uh eight Coltech three thirty systems in laden gravel. So essentially, the roof leaders will go into the storm system. Um, because generally speaking, roof is assumed to be a clean source of water. Uh, it does not need to go through a hydrodynamic separator or oil-water separator prior to entering the system. Um, there will be um as recommended access hazards for cleaning, because obviously leaves and other natural debris does eventually get into these systems. So, or that's why we've included a maintenance plan as well. Once this system i- is receiving water, uh, essentially, it's going to fill up to a point, and then we have two outlets. Typically, you'd see one outlet, but in this case, we have two, uh, which allows us to meter our flow going to the detention basin and limit our flow coming out uh to the uh west. So going up to the north, we have actually, with this system, we've been able to decrease our flows slightly, um, anywhere from about a half a cubic foot a second to a little bit over a foot, foot per second going towards the basin. So that's decreased peak flows going to the basin. Um, infiltrating a bunch, and we also then have this flow coming out uh going essentially to the west of the uh building. Um, uh, the west and the south, this outflow, everything held the same would be resulting in a peak in- increase for the remainder of the site, because previously um, the lawn areas were designed to just sheet flow everything down uh to to the south and to the rear of the property as it naturally does. Um, however, to our benefit, because we have this pool that we've had to install uh or were installing, we've had to add stormwater system for that as well. Um, what we, our office has done several times in various locations around Connecticut is we essentially make the pool a self um containing system. So you have your pool, your standard patio around the pool, and beyond that, we do about a foot of uh a gravel receiving trench. So we have this foot, as stormwater hits this foot, it then infiltrates into the gravel where we have a larger, and I believe I've got it right down here, uh, a larger gravel receiving bay. So water fills up this bay, and we've sized this so that even in a hundred-year storm, all of the water generated from the pool and the patio is going to be contained and infiltrated on site. That means there's a fairly notable decrease in contributory area in the rear, which allows for us to direct this outflow from the roof, from the Coltech system, along spill to- towards the rear of the site, and still also result in a uh reduced peak flow for the site from what had originally been proposed. Um, and that's really the the integral, is we got this twofold system here where we're metering how much water we're releasing as originally planned up front uh and then using a swale to direct that water back towards the property where it was going to go in the long term anyway. And then the pool essentially taking um close to a uh twenty-two by forty-two square of the property and just straight infiltrating it. Um, so that's really the meat and potatoes of the stormwater, and I know that's uh the crux of the conversation here. So at this point, if there's any specific questions about the stormwater, I'd love to open it up for discussion to the commission.
Mr. Basserman, do you have a sheet that uh demonstrates the current uh stormwater uh peak flows, et cetera, and then after the uh after the project is complete, what those numbers look like?
Yep, uh, those were found in the stormwater drainage report with the original uh application scrolling down here. Um, and so we have the the two points to really compare here are what was approved and deemed acceptable versus what the lot total is going to be. And by, with the twofold system, we're actually reducing uh the peak flows for all storms uh going up to the hundred-year storm in all all cases for this site with the uh two storm systems included.
And uh, Mr. Basserman, can you help me understand what primary means here?
Okay, uh, so how the program works is uh there's a series of nodes, and when you have a terminating node, the final one, it essentially just takes all of the the accounts for all the various inflows, because we only have one inflow, there's only one inflow listed. And then the primary would be what that total is, is that that's the primary peak flow, that is, everything combined. So in this case, because we only have the in, one lot doing the flow, we only have one flow, one inflow into this node and then the primary. So for the two equations, you can look at e- or the two tabs, you can look at either of the uh either of the columns. But essentially, you just want to make sure that we're comparing the approved total uh to the proposed total. So uh, let's see if I can highlight, we want to, this number to this number. So in a one-year storm, we had approved a um zero point seven two primary peak flow. And with these two systems, we're decreasing that down uh to a point five five cubic fi- cubic foot per second peak flow.
Hmm.
Mr. Georgina, can you go back to um the site plan with the infiltration?
Yep.
Um, okay, and in between, oops, you just went really big, and I've already zoomed in on my screen, that's good, though, you can zoom in. Um, so, uh, so between our um one sixty-eight and one sixty-six, we've got this SD line, is that your storm drain line?
Yep, that would be the outflow for the storm drain.
And then this um rectangle with our small circles, is that like an an outflow with some riprap or something? What is that?
Correct, um, it's an energy just dip.
Dissipator?
Yes, thank you. Speak, speaking's hard at the end of the day. Um, but yeah, so essentially, that's a an appropriately sized for a four-inch um four-inch pipe, which is what the outflow is here. Uh, so it'll hit that, and then essentially, it's running by grass, yeah, a broader grass well down to a close to five-foot grass well at the end, directing towards the rear of the property along the property line.
This is, this, this is a swale?
So contour wise, what, when this pipe outflows, it's not entirely a swell here. This is just e- essentially um contour grading. So water will come outflow down here, and as it wants to come down towards this lower elevation about in line with where where this uh perimeter fence, about halfway on one ninety-five Cherry Hill, this is the actual swale that will then continue down and essentially level out towards the end of the property, directing water to flow as it naturally would beyond here into the brush and beyond.
And then that, this is Commissioner Boda, it's it's, that swale is picking up the second storm drainage with the the energy dissipator.
So, so the second stor- second storm drater is actually a footing drain from the foundation. Um, so it's an outflow for the act, a- any groundwater or anything from a storm that would be coming against a foundation wall. Uh, and that's kicking out entirely where it was, has always been, um, from the original uh approval. But so that'll come out and essentially join where into the swale and dissipate out into the brush. Um, from a regulatory standpoint, Connecticut doesn't regulate groundwater, so to speak. Um, but what would be expected here would be not concurrent to peak flows. So you'd have your storm, and it's on the surface, and that's where you'd be getting your stormwater peak flows from. We'd be talking twelve hours to three weeks later, you'd be seeing groundwater actually infiltrating and kicking out of this. So they wouldn't necessarily be, you wouldn't be seeing a high flow from the footing drain, at the same time, you're seeing uh high flow from a stormwater uh system.
And in the event of multiple rain events where our groundwater is high and our stormwater is rushing off, which is we're we're certainly seeing a lot more of.
Uh, so there there is that potential that there would be, e- essentially, the footing drain, water and ground, we're we're talking inches an hour. Uh, so volumetrically, it's a very small, like closer to a constant trickle coming out of one of these drains versus the flow uh which would be more in cubic feet per second. The the foundation drain would not cause a notable increase in the flow.
Okay, and then, so then, let's just assume that that flow is minimal. Um, it looks like it's, I I can't see our direction on the map, but we're going to be moving to the the lower left of the page.
Yep.
Is this a different, this beyond the property line?
Uh, so.
Properly line cutting down the center here?
The the big, bold one coming down the center is indeed the property line.
And so what, yeah, go ahead.
I was gonna say, the footing drain in this area for this building was always kicking out in this location uh as originally approved. So that's.
But but now you you're, you also have a swale. So let's set aside the footing drain for a minute, you now have a swale that is also kicking out into this direction. And I'm I'm curious about where that, I mean, I can't, we can see the in, the pool on the right, but I don't know who is on the left, and if we're now sending it into somebody's backyard.
So cur- currently, um, the both properties are owned by the developer, so we're kicking on to the developer's own property. Any stormwater decisions or or implications here would become a prescriptive easement at a minimum. That water was designed to kick here and it kicked here pre- from original design, whether there was an easement or not. However, as we look here for the original subdivision, you can see with the topography coming in here, that there's a ridge and a little bit of a valley. So this sheet flow from this site, whatever the peak flow was and whether it's discharging slightly to the north or uh to the rear is, was always coming along and to continue along this ridge, where it eventually drops off uh two or three properties away into this uh into the storm ponds back here that have been servicing the other two to three sections of the subdivision.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you, and still Commissioner Boda, so you now have infiltration happening around the pool.
Hmm.
Um, you showed us tho- that profile. Um, do you have soil tests here, or this is gravel that you're adding?
Correct, so essentially, what we end up doing is when you have to excavate for the pool, you overex, I mean, you don't really overexcavate, because they already do. But when backfilling in here uh along the bottom of the pool, when we get to this elevation, essentially, we compact the native soil there beneath, fill this with uh a gravel stone void and a a series of uh four-inch perforated pipes to allow for even distribution within the uh stone network. Uh, and then it's allowed to infiltrate. Now, in terms of specific soil uh testing on this site, we have not done any, but as we have been tearing up this site, it's fairly consistent with um, the uh NCRS report uh in terms of the soils in this area. So we're confident that we'll get the results so long as um the situation is not used where this becomes a temporary detention basin uh during construction.
We can't do that anymore, anyway. Right?
Cor- cor- correct, it, that's not something that sh- that should be done, that is not a best management practice.
It's not, I, my, yeah, well, right, that that shouldn't, that shouldn't be at all.
Correct, yeah, I'm I'm not, I'm, it's literally just a comment saying, so long as we don't get someone doing something they shouldn't do, that it should be fine, should infiltrate or.
So the infiltration is happening in this gravel area. Is it, is it meant to continue to infiltrate in the soil that you've, it sounds like you've described as slightly compacted beneath the gravel?
So it, essentially, what is going to end up doing is, wh- when you dig up soil, it, you get, it's called a fluff factor. Um, so if you have a volume that's, you know, one cubic foot, you dig up the soil, you get closer to uh one point three cubic feet worth of fill. Uh, when you're then re- putting it back in, you try to compact it back to its natural compaction level, so that you get more or less that in an equal volume in and out. Um, so when backfilling this, you don't have fluffed up material, there's a nat- there's a tendency to compact all this to try and get that back to the natural compaction level, so you get the soil properties you would have had beforehand. So in terms of this, you you dig it up, the soil, just like your garden, if you were to aerate, aerate your garden, the soil's fluffy, takes up more volume. When you want to put the pool in and have it maintain a, have a weight and have structure to it, you have to recompact that material. Don't think of it so much as an overcompaction, where we're trying to make this a running surface, it's just compacted the point where it needs to uh bear weight. Uh, and in terms of, I I know this is a, not a system that I don't think Branford has seen before, um, but we have installed several of these in West Hartford uh and in Fairfield County. Uh, and so far, they have been functioning fine in terms of, no complaints, the water infiltrates and we, there's not standing water or overflow from them.
Um, okay, so the system sounds functional, I'm, I am wondering about the underlying existing soil. Um, and I understand that you said that it's been matching with um exist- with existing soil maps. Um, it certainly seems like if this additional water is going to be directed here, it would make sense to confirm that it can infiltrate at a rate that um is appropriate even past that gravel.
Um, so ju- just on on that, um, the pool itself is not receiving additional water. We are simply taking the square footage and of the pool, like, we're not, we're not directing lawn to this, this is just taking the pool and the patio. And that's covering an area, and we're just collecting that area and allowing it to infiltrate along the edges. So eh, this isn't like we're not directing the whole lawn into this, and this is a a localized storm system to to handle the whole backyard. This is just addressing the square, the footprint of the pool.
Just of the patio?
The the, the pool and the pat, so when we model the pool itself, um, we've had several discussions with various town engineers that everyone understands that there's about uh five to six inches worth of volume in the pool. Um, that when it rains, you have to get at least that much for a pool to finally overflow. Uh, however, the agreed-upon practice is to model the pool as essentially a asphalt surface. So the volume for this storage assumes that when it rains and a drop of water hits the pool, that it's going to sheet flow to the edge and be collected by the gravel. In actuality, the area of the pool itself has about five inches of storage before it's going to even overflow to get into this, but the gravel is volumetrically sized, assuming that that five inches over the thirty by uh, pardon me, I was, I'm drawing a blank on this, eighteen by thirty-two uh pool, we're assuming it gets into here volumetrically, and that's, that's what we've accounted for, for the volume in gravel.
Hmm, interesting, okay.
This is Commissioner, this is Commissioner Goklowski, um. What what is the uh volume of the pool going to be approximately, do you know, the gallons?
Uh, I I don't, that's kind of a standard spec, I don't do the pools itself, but I mean, we can asu- I can do real quick math for you, but it's a, gonna be eighteen by thirty-two. Uh, and let's call it four feet deep on average, so um eighteen by calculator, eighteen by thirty-two by four feet on average, so uh two thousand three hundred and four cubic feet worth of water for the pool itself, plus or minus?
Is there a contingency plan in place if the pool should fail? Because that's an awful lot of water that if that pool does fail, that's going to be going into the wetlands and everywhere else. That's my, that's my, that's my concern right now, based on the logistics of the location of where the pool is going based in the the wetlands. I mean, I'm, I'm my, I trust Jamie's judgment to make a decision, but I read, just read her report and um there's, there's a couple concerns that I want to make sure that are addressed um in building this pool.
S- so in terms of my lack of worry on this, Branford itself has already gone above and beyond in limited um slope grading. Uh, can, typically speaking, load bearing wise, we consider a two-to-one slope to be stable in engineering. So essentially, every uh two feet horizontally, you're allowed to climb or drop one foot uh in elevation. Branford's gone above and beyond and doesn't, requires a three-to-one slope, uh, which is considerably more stable. Um, I wouldn't be concerned about the pool itself, uh, a a blowout or fail or a slide on this. I I honestly think most of these in-ground pools are exceptionally stable unless they're in a situation where uh you're seeing a floating capability, which would be after a drawdown, but it's like, say, for winter, if you were to have overdrawn your pool, you get uh groundwater that is exceptionally high. Um, and you actually end up with the pool floating vertically out of the water when you end up, you know, buoyancy, so the pool becomes buoyant in the soil and floats. In this situation, if we. In this situation, if we look at the pool itself, we're gonna mostly be in fill. So there really shouldn't be a groundwater um interaction. Um i- in the the northeast corner, we're gonna be in native material, but the further out we go towards where your concern is, this is gonna be it it's native material. Um it it's on site here, it's so it's not soil that we're unfamiliar with. Um but it's gonna be compacted and built up on on the down and backside to be structurally uh stable and that's it's not uncommon. What I would think is uncommon is to find a buoyancy situation after we build up above where natural grade currently is. Groundwater shouldn't, I would be surprised if it swelled um to ride higher than that. Typically groundwater, once it's in a stable state, rides along impervious surfaces like bedrock, uh clay, silt and fines. Or in low areas, that's where you end up seeing streams and ponds that naturally are fed by groundwater.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, um alright, so so we approved a plan for what ten or eleven houses on the street? Right? And we approved a plan that the houses would be two thousand to three thousand square feet for each house. Is that right?
Ballpark, yeah.
Okay, and so this house is forty-three percent bigger than it's than we had approved and there's still ten other lots where houses are being built that are probably all gonna be forty-three percent bigger than what we approved in the first place. Is that? So are we gonna be back here ten more times on the same issue?
At most, we would be back here for lots seven through, this is eleven, so seven, eight, nine and uh ten. Uh the other one, the other lots are not impacting on wetlands, uh so there wouldn't wouldn't be a callback. And in all honesty, the reason we're 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 back here is due to the fact that this building is larger and we are taking the appropriate actions. There's been a little bit of shuffling of how water is directed on site. So we're here because we're being responsible and dealing with the water and now the proper procedure is to come before you to it to discuss and address this. It's not as if we're trying to throw a forty-three percent larger house on here and go nah, the water's fine, we're not dealing with it, don't worry about it, it's gonna be fine. We're taking appropriate actions to mitigate the water or the peak flows and infiltrate as much as we possibly can.
Okay, eh Commissioner Pat Antonas again, I understand that, but there's five other lots that are potentially going to have this issue because as I understand it, all the houses that are planned to be built on this extension are all going to be similar size. So they're all going to be forty-three percent bigger than the original plan.
With all do with all due respect, Commissioner, I I don't even know that number. They're individual buyers who are coming with their individual architects uh with what size houses they want. Um so I I I can't answer. Currently, I know that we had one buyer originally come in uh looking at lot ten and their house was only uh two thousand eight hundred square foot that they wanted. Uh that buyer ended up not being able to get funding and backed out, but I it's it's lot lot to lot. Lot one across the street uh was within eight percent of the original size. So eh I can't tell you that they're all gonna be forty-three percent. I can't tell you that they're all gonna be spot on. Uh it's individual buyers, the subdivision and the road were what were you know, gone through and approved and then just like any other subdivision, we're selling to individual lots. This is not a build the spec situation. These are billed based on the buyers, what they're looking to put on there, just like any other home buyer uh of a vacant lot would be.
Alright, and uh Commissioner Hapton is getting in this, I understand it, the extra water would be going then to lot ten?
Uh so volu- so flow wise, going to lot seven, which has al- always been going to lot lot seven. So vol- volume wise to the basin, water is, we're going the same or a less flow going to the basin lot seven. In terms of lot ten, lot ten was always seeing even a higher peak flow before this. So what we're doing, everything that's being done here to be responsible is decreasing what the the peak storm flow is going to be on lot ten. We're just reconfiguring how that flow is getting there. So before, it was a completely uncontained backyard sheet flowing across the lawn. Now we've got a backyard that's again going to be uncontained, uh and then with the larger house, uh that is we're we're taking that, we're infiltrating close to two thousand gallons on every storm from the house, so taking that out of the equation to begin with. Uh and then we're directing that water along a mutually beneficial swell to then join in the rear of the property where it had always been approved to go. Along this natural swell in the woods going back along behind lot ten and beyond.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bassman, um how are we dealing with the pool wastewater?
Uh so uh Ja- Jamie can uh direct this uh i- if she wants, but from uh from a health department standpoint, there's essentially three ways to deal um with pool water. Um it's a salt water, uh which everyone hears that immediately thinks the ocean, but it's closer uh in salt content to saline drops you'd put in your eyes. Uh but the three methods are, one is a straight direct drawdown, which by regulation can't be done within fifty feet of uh a wetland and that would be essentially you run a pump and you would discharge water uh for your seasonal drawdown. Number two, that's pretty common nationwide, would be to essentially run a hose into your house and use your uh bath, essentially your bathtub to run it. And then number three would be to run it uh into uh a a public storm system with approval from the local health department. Um there's also, and it's less common, there are drawdown companies you can call uh that'll come out and actually pump down a pool for you. Uh what they do with the water, I'm not sure, not my MO, but I know these companies exist. Uh and in terms of, I'm gonna say detrimental, but this is i- it's more detrimental than than the uh than the salt water is uh for the pool, but it would be a backwash uh from the system. That's typically backwashed, either done into a container and emptied into a waste receptacle, such again like a tub or something like that in terms of interior for passing through storm water. Uh having someone do that, uh those services do exist and remove it. Or you would essentially do a backwash of your filter, discharge it again uh outside of that fifty foot uh distance from the wetland and then you would flush the area with clean water after that to dilute. Um because we all know dilution is the solution to uh contaminants. And again, the contaminants from a filter in a pool, uh we're looking at biological and salt buildup. So those are both what you'd wanna be diluting with water versus a chlorine pool where you would have a potentially a chlor- a chlorine sink.
Do we know, Mr. Commissioner Bassman, do we know what kind of filter they're using?
Uh so eh quite literally between uh between when uh my last memo and this, we actually got a confirmation, they're gonna be using a cartridge filter. Um so essentially, the filter itself is car- is cartridges, they should be able to be disposed of. Uh it would just be a minimal flush after changing cartridges.
Right, okay. Thank you. Uh Jamie, uh this is Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, you had uh some concerns, I think, as to why you wanted to bring this before the uh the commission again. Uh with tonight's discussion, uh is there anything outstanding from your standpoint?
Uh Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, so I mean, we've we've touched base on it. Um I guess the main the main concern is, I'm gonna quickly jump over to um.
Do you wanna drive?
Yeah, I'm gonna jump over to the subdivision um site plan. Can everyone see lot eleven, ten, nine? We've got the offsite wetland areas. Um so you can see generally that the site is pitched to drain. Um what is it? South. So if we jump over to the proposed plan, you know, the drain, the the grading kind of mimics that with the exception of this swell, which then will follow the natural contours. Um but the concern, I guess, that I I had, in part with aside from changing directions of flows, is the concentration of flow. And so the question ultimately is, is the vegetation, the lawn area and the existing vegetation to remain sufficient to handle the velocity and volume of flow that would be going through that area so that it wouldn't cause any issues? But regarding stability, that might impact the wetlands.
So the i- if I may, the easier the two questions to answer is, because we are decreasing the flow from this site. The offsite impacts are going to be less. Eh once we get to that brush and going beyond, there's less peak flow volume, that's less velocity, that's less water going through the existing brush. So that's going to be a decreased impact in terms of the that brush will will hold up. We're not gonna see scouring as a result of this. Um the
Time out for a second, this is Commissioner Boda. So you're saying decreased um peak flow. But what I'm not hearing is a decreased volume as well. So eh do is there an increased volume in this in this out- outflow?
There's inherently an increased volume with all development is essentially unavoidable. We are essentially with this.
If you're infiltrating it.
Well, eh eh as I was gonna say, so what we are doing is we are with the pool and it varies by storm. But in the uh hundred year storm, the pool essentially will be infiltrating close to four thousand gallons of water instead of letting that sheet flow across the site to infiltrate naturally or what or what have you. So we're we're retaining that. Um in all storms, the uh Coltech systems infiltrating about two thousand gallons worth of water uh as well. Um and then dividing that the overflow from that, so the outflow from those between the detention basin further beyond on lot seven and then directing it to the rear. So there will most like essentially turning the site from brush into lawn, there's going to be an increased volume. That's just naturally what's going to happen with eh any site that's been developed in the the whole wide world. If you take something from a forested wooded area or a brush area or natural field to lawn, you're going to increase volume and you're gonna increase runoff rate. It's just, that's that's a natural thing. The goal is to by mitigating, decrease the peak flows under the assumption that downstream, if they can handle the existing volume of water. If you can decrease that peak flow and make that flow over a longer period of time, you alleviate the strain of the added volume. And that's what all this is doing is we're aiming here to decrease that peak flow and minimize our increase the volume. Did that answer or? Commissioner Boder, Boda?
Jamie had, this is Commissioner Boda, Jamie had orig- originally posed it, so I was leaving space for for Jamie to address if that address the I I have a follow-up, but Jamie, I had just jumped in because I wanted to clarify, but.
Well, I was asking the question generally for the commission's benefit, so um I guess I would leave it open to any of the commissioners have any follow-up questions?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Boda. I I am also now wondering as we're as we're looking at this this outflow in the swell about um any nutrient loading that is gonna be coming off of this lawn and carried by that volume through the swell heading toward the wetlands. Um I think it is safe to say that these law- these will be treated lawns. Um and so can you talk a little bit about nutrient? And retention of those nutrients and how that's gonna happen so that we don't end up es- essentially sending all those nutrients toward the pond. Creating um well quite quite a problem over a period of time.
So I am not an environmental engineer. Um that's really outside of my office's wheelhouse to address the nutrient loading, so to speak. That's that's not a s- it's not a site engineer's position. What I can tell you is this wetland, this pond, this is an integral part of the existing subdivision. Uh quite literally, every property on Autumn Ridge has an easement to direct their stormwater into this pond from their lawns. Abbey Road utilizes these three, these three ponds, they were historically farm ponds that have been used for stormwater drainage forever. They've been classified as wetlands at this point because of the nutrients going to the ponds and the species that have established themselves there. And the soils resulting that have be coming grown themselves and be classified as wetland soil. But this is not a virgin wetland that we are discussing here. This is a farm pond that has been retrofitted to be a stormwater system for Autumn Ridge, Abbey Road, and presumably if the project did not lost funding uh previously, this would have been developed and also feeding into this as it was to begin with. Um since we are not part of that original subdivision, uh continuing on the phasing, we're really trying to do our due diligence here to to mitigate our impacts on these ponds to begin with. Um but I I'm not in a position to accurately tell you any information about the nutrient loading.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Goklowski. Jamie, keep it quiet. What are your thoughts?
Um I guess I wanted to leave it open for commissioners to ask their questions. Uh and then if there are no more questions, I can run through the staff report, see if that comes up with anything else or?
Jamie, do we we have a town engineer sign off on this?
Uh the town engineer did review the revised materials that were submitted and he didn't have any further comments or questions to submit.
Okay, why don't we um look at the staff report?
Alright, so this did require RWA notification, which was sent out. We did receive a comment letter back um with what I would say are probably pretty standard comments. Um went over the fact that this is part of a subdivision that was recently approved. Um I did notice that there appeared to be a typo on the labeling of the one sixty-two foot contour, so I'm suggesting that that should be revised prior to start a site work to make sure there's no confusion in the field. Um and I noted that the grading extends off the property to show how it would tie in with the proposed subdivision grading, so I'm just commenting that the of course, this review would apply only to the subject property to which it pertains for. Um stormwater management, we've gone over that, so I don't know if you want me to read it. I think we've discussed pretty much everything in here with the exception of that I'm recommending that the applicant place a drainage easement or other mechanism to clearly document the rights to drain related to the proposed drainage and the spanning across property lines. Landscaping, there's no specific landscaping proposed on the plan, however, they are proposing to retain the vegetation within fifty plus feet, depending on where you're at. Um of the wetlands slash pond, planning and zoning approval will be required. Um possible conditions for consideration, if the commission feels ready to make a decision and thinks approval is appropriate, includes preconstruction, meaning prior to clearing, initial erosion control inspection prior to land disturbance. Final inspection, everything should be marked out by a surveyor and certified um as built and that everything has been constructed as proposed with final grading and stormwater structures. Uh prior to start a site work, site plan shall be revised to correctly label the proposed one sixty-two foot contour. Prior to any work related to the pool commencing, information regarding the proposed filtration system and dewatering practices shall be submitted to the in the wetland office for review by the duly authorized agent. I will just quickly note, there is some dewatering comments on the site plan um already. And then our standard condition, pool water shall not be drained into wetlands, watercourses, streets or within fifty feet of these areas or to any storm drainage system. Standard conditions and general provisions. Any questions from commissioners?
This is Chris or Bassman. I I am a little bit uneasy with the fact that we have kind of an open question raised by uh Commissioner Boda regarding the treatment of the lawns and the runoff, especially with the increased volume. Add to that the fact that this is, you know, one of the lots in the subdivision and it's probably not uncommon that this is gonna be something uh that we face on other lots that come before us, as noted before, a number of lots uh are likely to have larger houses um than what the original subdivision approval was for. Um and and I I'm struck with the fact that that's still kind of an unanswered uh question. And I don't know if other other commissioners are concerned as well.
So I guess I I have two comments to that. Point, um one could be commission could request uh like an IPM plan about management of the lawn area. I don't know that that has kind of generally been practiced for a single family house, but it's something that you could consider. And then I don't, I'm not a professional regarding nutrient removal or anything like that. The one comment I have is based on the existing grading, which of course we don't know what's gonna happen, downgrade on the other lots to be developed, is that the water would be directed through this vegetated area. And it would actually travel south a ways before it would travel to one of the ponds. So it has areas that it would be traveling through where some of those nutrients might. I don't know though. That is, that is not a professional opinion, but
If if I may, just just to add on this. So the pool is self-contained, so that's water from the pool is going into this gravel system to be treated. Other than a hundred years, actually, anything over a fifty year storm, which is still a lot of water, you're not going to see what the pool itself overflowing, because again, you've got that five to six inches, but we account for that in the volume wise. Again, this is salt water, saline love, like saline water, like you'd put in eye drops or whatnot, so it's not particularly a high concentrated salt water, which would then be infiltrated.
I'd like to start about the pool. It's the it's the laundry.
I I understand that. I I do. What I'm what I'm saying is is the in the point load from Jamie up for that Jamie mentioned up front, essentially from this Coltech system is coming from the roof. There won't be any nutrients on there. What's going to be directed down here is square footage wise, less treatment lawn than what was approved in the original subdivision. It's a larger house, it's a pool, there's physically less grass, less lawn, less to be treated than what had originally been approved in the subdivision. I I can't tell you nutrients removal, it's not my area of expertise, but from a square footage standpoint, it's physically less square feet. It's a than than it was to begin with. It's a larger driveway that we've accounted for in all the calculations, so there's physically less fertilizer, less area to apply it to. Other than that, I can't
What's the reduction in the lawn square footage?
I don't know. Hold on, I can probably get you that answer. I don't off the top of my head. Let's see here.
This this commissioner, Commissioner Ormrod, I get what while he calculates that, I mean, this is an undeveloped lot right now, so there's no lawn being maintained, right? This is just the difference between what what was allowed and 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 what's proposed here.
Just for clarification, was that directed to me?
Um, I I, yeah, Commissioner Ormrod, I I guess, I mean, you know, I I just think that the the calculations kind of move because if it's not being maintained as a lawn now, I mean, it it it's inherently better than even if, you know, a proposed smaller lawn that will be maintained as a as a lawn and with with potentially a lot of inputs to that lawn.
But there's no nutrients being applied today to that.
Uh, that, I mean, I that's correct, but we roll this back to prior to it being a vacant lot, it was actively a farm being farmed with nutrients being applied to the farm, to the farm.
Right now.
Hey, you're not muted.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah. Commissioner Ormrod, I guess, you know, I do express, I I do have those same concerns. You know, this is a an issue we're seeing not just in Branford but elsewhere, but you know, any of ours shallow surface water ponds or lakes, you know, they they tend to get nutrient loading and 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 they go towards these eutrophic conditions over time, but I don't know as a commission if, you know, especially in this case where there's no proposed wetland activities, it's all in the upland review. I I guess the only piece of information that I think might help us make a decision is, you know, we're I think infiltration is is the key here and letting, you know, we a lot of this is based off of or uh, no nothing's been, I guess, field tested. It's 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 all published values of of the hydraulic conductivity. You know, so I I think if you know, it would be nice to see some infiltration values, especially at the locations of these proposed outfalls. You know, to to get a better understanding of, you know, how much water is going to be, you know, in infiltrated into the ground and you know, that might be somewhat of a of a our our best defense for for kind of staving off any nutrient transportation. If if that has more resonance time in the soil before it gets to the pond, it it can mitigate any any nutrient concerns that we're that we're talking about.
Mr. Bass, yeah, my my raising the issue was was as much a process issue as content. There was a question raised and and in 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 my mind was not resolved and, you know, if we're gonna make a decision with an unresolved open question, is that concern?
Okay, hold on, I I think I've got your answers right here. Brush, okay. So previously as you had approved, as you had approved it, it was two thousand, two thousand one hundred and fifty square feet of grass cover. Or sorry, twenty thousand one hundred and fifty square foot of grass cover. And now that is only seventeen thousand two hundred and ninety square feet of grass cover.
Well, you know, reduction of what, ten percent?
Ballparkish. Hold on, since I got the numbers in front of me, let me just run them real quick and give you the actual percentage. About a sixteen percent reduction.
Yes, okay.
I gotta, this commissioner Ormrod, I I don't know if we have a precedent here in terms of what types of considerations. You know, we could, conditions, we could put on a permit to limit or control. You know, any, any, any nutrients. Is that something town council should review or is that, do we have any previous permits that we've discussed this issue?
So Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, um, I think generally on larger scale projects, sometimes the commissioner requests or requires a like a management plan on how lawn areas are going to be maintained, particularly if it's gonna be owned in common. I don't believe that was part of the subdivision application. I have seen conditions before on permits where it says only organic fertilizers or something like that, but those are usually on older permits. I'm not based on trainings I've been to, I'm not entirely sure if you can do that. Just prohibit the use of fertilizers. I guess you could throw in a I mean, you could throw in a condition of approval that encourages the property owner to follow best management practices to minimize impacts of using any fertilizers, herbicides, fungicides on the lawn, so that it's you know, not right before a rain event, the right amount for the right area.
So if I can jump in for a second, this is Commissioner Bota. I think you know, in looking at the plan, I think the thing that sort of has caught my attention is this swale. So you've got the outfall from the roof and then now we have this combining swale in sort of the that first third of the page on the what would be on the eastern side and and then you've got an energy dissipator and directing water to the southeast. And now we're looking at, you know, over lawn run and I think you know, that that's typically a place where we might see some intentional vegetation to, and I don't mean lawn in order to not just slow down the 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 flow and help infiltrate, but potentially to uptake any of those additional nutrients prior to them entering the wetland and I I hear Mr. Georgina on, you know, the the historic nature of this property, but that is not part of our regulations for consideration. Eutrophication is a very real issue if we're gonna ensure that these wetlands and ponds can persist to capture that water. We need to not expedite eutrophication by sending tons of nutrients into that that body of water. And so it just it seems like there is an opportunity in that swale to be more thoughtful about capturing anything that would have mobilized prior to it heading into the wetland. I think that's that probably sums up what has caught my attention.
This is Kishan. All right, I'll I'll just say, yeah, no, I think that's a great idea to you know, vegetate that swale with with with, you know, almost like a rain garden or or something, you know, right? Not just turf grass, but you know, species that add some value will will slow to any velocity down, allow water to infiltrate and 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 support nutrient uptake and 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 try to attenuate that.
This is Christopher Bassman. Sir, are we suggesting then that the applicant provide that at the next meeting? Or do you want to deal with that this evening by putting that as a condition in the staff, in the staff report?
Another potential option would be if the commission's comfortable with that being submitted and if I find that it looks satisfactory, I could review it administratively.
This is Commissioner Bota. I think that's a nice middle ground. I I think you you're getting the sense of where we're going with with that and we have done things such as that in the past, so. And that way the applicant can continue to move forward. They have to go to P and Z two, correct? And they're waiting on our permit?
Correct, they have to go to planning and zoning. I'm not entirely sure what that process.
Yeah. Yeah, I I think that would be appropriate.
So it seems like in in addition to the things outlined in the conditions of approval, looking for vegetation within that swale, the area between that roof storm water outlet and that swale, that kind of area.
Would you pull them back up? There was there was one other minor thing.
And I, the other thing that I have noted here is infiltration testing, is that like a condition of approval kind of thing prior to construction, doing infiltration testing to confirm that the stormwater will function as designed? What part of staff report did you want to look at?
I'm sorry, I don't remember. Can you just, let's start at the top and, okay, right there. No, no, no. With conditions, I think. Keep going. Oh, number five, pool water. Can you scroll right there? I I I think in this case, I would just like to be really super clear that that water, that wetland water course, that storm drain system includes that swale that just, I'm sure will look so inviting to run a hose. That was it.
Okay.
So just to confirm, the area you you want to be reinforced with species to absorb nutrients and resist erosion, you don't want the pool to be drained into, is that correct?
That's, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it shouldn't, yeah, right. We don't want it draining down toward the well in any way.
So I will just note that currently it looks like there's the pool fence going down the middle of the swale. So that might have to be adjusted if you're gonna be planting in there. Unless you widen the swell and plant on either side.
Yep, I'm gonna have to look at how we're gonna address this.
All right, any other questions? And I'm assuming the commission doesn't need to come, doesn't need to see if they're widening swell, because that should also kind of help with potentially flowing water a little bit.
This is Commissioner Bota. So just Mr. Georgina, I I before we we go ahead and 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 vote, is is this we we don't design applications. We certainly just do the the permitting process and then conditions of approval. So before we go forward with this, does is is this something that seems completely? You're the engineer. You said that you're not your background is not ecology, so but you're you're representing the the property owner at this point, so is this something that it seems reasonable to you or are we gonna end up back here with?
As the applicant really wants a pool, which is really what's reshifting the backyard and and a house of this size, I think the the giving up some plantings along the property line is a fairly minimal ask.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions from the commission? Any any questions for from you, Mr. Georgina?
Nope, I believe I believe we've covered everything.
Do we have a motion on this applicant? Twenty-four oh eight oh two.
This is Commissioner Bota. I can make a motion, but there were some adjustments to the conditions of approval and I don't have them written down. But I can, I can give it a whirl, so somebody be ready to make an amendment. This is Commissioner Bota. I'd like to make a motion to approve inland wetland twenty-four oh eight oh two, one ninety-five Cherry Hill with the possible conditions for consideration included as out Possible conditions for consideration included as outlined in. The uh nine twenty six twenty four meeting doc. In addition to the conditions for consideration. Um, in number five, we're also going to add that clarify. That the pool water sho- shall not be drained um into. The where it says a storm drainage system and very specifically. The uh. The swale to the southeast. In addition, we are looking for the applicant to submit a planting plan. Um, for the swale with the intention of um uptaking nutrients. Um, and providing additional water uptake as well. Uh additionally, I'd like to include the all of the standard conditions and the general provisions. In the issuance of all permits. I think there was something else I'm missing. So but we need a second first.
This is Commissioner Bassman. I'll second that.
Unless I think that was everything unless you wanted to include infiltration testing.
Oh, um, this is Commissioner Boda. I will add. Infiltration testing um to confirm that the um site will infiltrate. Where where infiltration is proposed. Um, around the pool area. And I'm not looking at the map. That the is it like the north uh east?
Be west.
Can we get in like a a way to? Name that section of the map. I'm not looking at a map.
Proposed underground detention system.
The proposed underground detention system. Thank you.
Uh inland wetland inland wetland associate Katie Blanchett, um Commissioner Boda, I just have a quick question. After. The applicant is to develop a planting plan to provide for uptake of nutrients. And what was the other thing?
A additional water.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And that planting plan is to be reviewed um by the agent.
Chairman Bassman, do you agree to those?
I do.
Were you the one that seconded?
I do. Okay. On the, let's see, inland wetland twenty four oh eight oh two. Commissioner Gokowski, how do you vote?
Commissioner Gokowski, aye.
Commissioner Meitzin?
Commissioner Meitzin, aye.
Commissioner Armrod?
Commissioner Armrod, aye.
Commissioner Papantonis?
Commissioner Papantonis, nay.
Commissioner Boda?
Commissioner Boda, aye.
Commissioner Bassman, aye. Hey, thank you, Mr. Georgina.
Thank you very much for the consideration.
Age restricted housing development. Can you bring us up to speed, Jamie?
Uh, Jamie Frederick, inland wetland agent, um, this application. Was submitted after a previous application was withdrawn due to time concerns. I have reviewed the application materials enough to be confident in that they are substantially similar to the revised materials that were submitted. Towards the end of the review of the previous application. When the application was withdrawn back in August, there was some discussion about re- plan to resubmit and. Potentially continue the peer review that was already in process. Um, so I think. Tonight, the two topics to focus on are um peer review, confirming whether that's appropriate and moving forward with. That process and then also public hearing, whether that's appropriate, the rationale for having, opening a public hearing and uh setting a date. So I did prepare a memo today, thinking that it might help this conversation a little bit. Um, I don't know if you want me to screen share it and let everyone read it independently, if you want me to read it out loud. Had all the time in the world between five o'clock in the meeting to go ahead and read it themselves. I'm not sure if somebody's trying to talk or.
Where's the background noise coming from? Here we go.
So. Should I let everyone read right now?
I think it's Mr. Anderson's uh mic that is picking up some background noise.
Yeah, I shut my door. So hopefully that'll do it. I could turn the mic off.
Jamie, this is Commissioner Boda. Can you name, there's there's a bunch of files in here. Um, what which document are we looking at?
Um, this is.
Is this nine nine twenty six memo?
Yes, number thirteen.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Bassman. Jamie, is it your intention that we deal with the um peer review issue first or or second?
Uh, I don't know that it overly matters. It's kind of the way I have the memo set up, but. If you feel differently.
Do you, this is Commissioner Boda. Do you need a motion for that? Because we can just, I I think we can just, we don't need to belabor that question. It's a no brainer. It feels like it's a no brainer to me. Does anybody feel differently?
So just to recap real quick, the leftover funds for the peer reviews three thousand one hundred and sixty. Last time I touched base with the peer review team, they felt that that was likely an adequate number.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I. Is the. Do we have a new application number? Because we're moving it from inland wetland. Twenty four oh two oh two to inland wetland twenty four. What, oh nine?
Oh two.
Twelve? What is what is it? Um, so I will make a motion that the remaining funds. Of three thousand one hundred sixty dollars from inland wetland twenty four oh two oh two. Be used um for application inland wetland twenty four oh nine oh two. To do peer review on the same subject property.
There a second for that? Any further discussion? Fisher Papantonis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Gokowski?
Commissioner Gokowski, aye.
Commissioner Meitzin?
Commissioner Meitzin, aye.
Commissioner Armrod?
Uh, this is Commissioner Armrod. I will uh uh remain recused from um all matters of this application.
Okay, Commissioner Boda?
Commissioner Boda, aye.
Commissioner Bassman, aye. All right, is uh is Commissioner Bassman, is it uh time to turn this over to the applicant, Jamie?
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the wentline agent, so um. Based on the last application, I'm anticipating the commission will want to schedule a public hearing for this application as well, so I think it would be. Uh, appropriate to schedule a public hearing date and certainly probably appropriate, you know, to just. Check in with the applicant in doing that process. Um, generally speaking, the commission likes to have the peer review response in hand prior to opening the public hearing. Uh, helps prevent delays once the public hearing has been opened. Um, and kind of minimizes the amount of revisions that the commission's looking at. So, or at least discussing. My recommendation would be to schedule the public hearing for October twenty fourth, unless for whatever reason there's commissioners have conflicts with that date. Um, then I would recommend November fourteenth, which would be the last regularly scheduled meeting. That the commission could open the public hearing without an extension from the applicant. I have checked with the peer review team and they would be available for either of those dates. Uh, November fourteenth would be remote only, but we're meeting remotely, so that shouldn't be a problem.
Sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Sorry, I'm having the mic problems. I won't be here for that October meeting.
You won't be here for the October meeting?
Correct.
Which which one?
Commissioner Meitzin, I won't be here for October twenty fourth either.
So.
Yeah, we're we're down to maybe not have it a quorum.
Jamie, what was the second date?
November fourteenth.
November fourteen. Okay, is everybody around for the fourteenth?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, Jamie, this is Doug Anderson uh for the applicant. Is there any possibility of of being, you know, since. Every everybody's so so familiar with this and peer review is, you know, pretty engaged in this process. Is it possible to try for the 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 meeting before the twenty fourth, fourteenth, or whatever that would be?
I'm I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear you and I can't turn my volume up anymore.
Basically, what I'm what I'm asking is, you know, given that the twenty fourth seems to be not an option. Uh, and and given the, you know, familiarity that the peer review has with the project. You know, I know it's a little tighter timeline, but i- is it possible to try and move that forward instead of backwards to the October meet meeting?
Would be October tenth?
So let's let's see. Today's the twenty sixth.
Do notice and all that stuff too, so.
Yeah, it it we wouldn't be able to notice in the paper. For the October tenth meeting. Because we have, it would would have had to run today.
Okay.
And October third. Another possibility is potentially. Doing a special meeting? Seeing a lot of heads being shaken, no? Uh, I'll just throw out one possibility, given that we've got two people that can't attend October twenty sixth. Is a special meeting and canceling the October twenty sixth meeting. I'm still not seeing a lot of interest in doing that, so.
You know, on the on the, this is Commissioner Bassman, on the October twenty fourth. With. Two people not able to attend, uh, w- we just have the minimum number. So I guess as long as everybody can commit at this point to the twenty fourth meeting. Come hell or high water, I guess we could have it on the twenty fourth, would be four commissioners.
Well, we've got one commissioner present that's recused, so the question, there's one commissioner that's not here this evening, so I don't. I don't know if they're able to attend.
Right.
On October twenty fourth or not. I suppose one option is we could schedule it for October twenty fourth and then if there's not a quorum table at two November fourteenth. In the, you know, in case that commissioner can be there. And if if they can't, it would be open without discussion, continue to November fourteenth, but it gives us a chance of getting it. Started sooner.
But this is Commissioner Boda, but the thing is, is that if we we start the public hearing and we don't use that public hearing to have any conversation whatsoever. I I just, I don't want us to run up against timetables again, and I'm sure that the. That Mr. Anderson would not be a fan of that either.
Yeah, I would say. Yeah, I would agree with that. I I would say if that's gonna be a, if that's going to be a fifty fifty scenario, then I would say. We just, we would want to hedge off of that and and go to the the meeting that everybody is gonna be there.
Sounds like November.
Can I make one more just point there? And I don't know when, you know, I I I regarding the um. Modification to the or or request for reduction of the application fee. I don't know if that needs to get on the record or not, but, you know, we would request that. Uh, be looked at, you know, you know, towards the end of the the process here in that, you know, we're. We're two inland wetland applications in to the tune of about twenty seven thousand dollars and about. Eight, nine thousand dollars. We're we're about thirty six thousand dollars into application fees on this uh submission here, so. I just would like to have on the record that, and we had some, you know, discussion about that at the previous. Meetings, you know, about looking at that as we got deeper into the second submission. So not looking for any reduction request now, but at some point, you know, towards the end of this process, would. Want to have on the record that we have the ability to uh revisit the cumulative. Wetlands application fees, you know, applied or looked at with respect to this application.
This is Commissioner Boda. I feel like we had, I and I I could be mixing this up with another. Site that had um that also had a re-submital but um or a modification that was. Very minor, but I feel like we just had a substantial con- um conversation about this on this property. And so not for this moment, but I'm wondering if the minutes from that could be utilized to. Um, essentially create a a bulleted list of uh the highlights of. That conversation of where we landed, because I, because I do think that we had. Hashed it out for quite a while. hashed it out for quite a while and come up with a solid plan. That was a few weeks ago, I don't remember what that plan is, but um.
Yeah, I I think I recall the plan, the plan was that we would would revisit it, you know, with a request at this uh, you know, if we were to resubmit right away, right? So I think there was a concern, well, what, we didn't show up for another year six months, and it was a a complete redo of the the whole process. Um, you know, that obviously would be a different scenario, but the the, you know, the anticipation was at that that time that we would immediately resubmit at the next, you know, available date, which we've done. And um unfortunately, we didn't have a quorum at the last meeting, so a public hearing couldn't have, couldn't be uh scheduled for which presumably would have been next, the next meeting, but so, like I said, I'm not looking for any the, gonna, I mean, cause it's it's too premature to talk about, you know, what that would look like, because we don't know where this application's going. But again, given the extent and the amount of uh dollars that have been, you know, expended in application fees that are you know, s- supposed to reflect the cost to review these applications. Um, again, we would respectfully request that that be looked at and analyzed, so at some point in the future, we can um have that dialogue about a reduction in the fee.
Uh, staff certainly can look at past practice and the conversation from the August meeting. Um, I just also wanna in- indicate that a fee reduction request should be submitted in writing um prior to the end of the review, so that that reduction can be considered um in line with the uh language in regulation nineteen point seven. Um, and the more you can kind of guide the commission on what you're requesting a reduction of and the rationale, I think the easier it is for them to consider. So I think that's enough on the fee for now, um.
I'm ready to make a motion on the public hearing. Ready, can we do that? Do we need to discuss it?
Uh, the rationale for the public hearing, I think is important to have included, but.
Um, I'm I'm ready. Okay, uh, this is Commissioner Boda, and looking at the application, we, uh, I'm looking at the permit um, application and um do- it does say in the wetland area of disturbance, um nine thousand six hundred seventy-three square feet, correct? I'm reading that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, alright, this is Commissioner Boda, and I would like to make a motion to identify application. Uh inland wetland twenty four oh nine oh two be designated um as uh an application with significant impact on wetlands um as part of their application um indicates wetland fill of nine thousand six hundred seventy-three square feet. Um, and that would call that, um, given that the application is proposing to have significant impact on wetlands, that this application be done through the public hearing process.
Do we have a second on that motion?
This is Commissioner Gokowski, I second that motion.
Any further discussion?
Um, can you just add the date of opening the public hearing?
And the uh public hearing to be, this is Commissioner Boda, I would like to amend the motion to include the start of the public hearing as November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
This is Commissioner Gokowski, I second that amendment.
Okay, Commissioner Papantonis?
Commissioner Papantonis, aye.
Commissioner Minson?
Commissioner Minson, aye.
Commissioner Boda?
Commissioner Boda, aye.
Commissioner Gokowski?
Commissioner Gokowski, aye.
Commissioner Baserman, aye. Alright, enforcement activity. T-Seg correct twenty four oh nine oh one, and the notice violation for Nine High Plains Road. Uh, re- sedimentation of the pond located on the property known as Forty Hickory Hill Lane is a continuation of the show cause hearing. Uh, do we have anybody for Nine High Plains Road on the call?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, yes, I believe we have the contractor uh that conducted the work at Nine High Plains on the call. Um, I also talked with um the father of the property owner uh this morning about kind of where they're at in the process. Um, so it's my understanding that the sam- water sample has been collected for um the flocculent analysis and has been sent to um the company to conduct that analysis to help determine the appropriate uh flocculent material to use to bind to the um material. Um, he wasn't sure when they would get those results back, but as I recall, uh soil scientist George Logan seemed to think that it would be available for um the October fourteenth meeting. They have sodded a decent portion of the site. Um, I do have pictures available if the commission wants to see it, uh they do have ten thousand square feet of sod being delivered early next week and plan to finish sodding um remaining bare areas. All the area along the front of the site and a decent amount of the slope has been sodded. Um, everything was looking stable, pretty stable when I was out there, uh and I didn't see any evidence of new material getting into the roadway. Um, so I don't know if you wanna hand it over to the contractor real quick to see if his, if he has any additional updates, information he wants to share prior to continuing with recommendations for moving forward?
Jamie, Commissioner Gokowski, can you pop up those pictures that you took? Let's see what, cause I know we saw some before pictures, um, I just wanna see.
And this is Commissioner Baseman, Jimmy, you mentioned the fourteenth, it's the tenth, isn't it, the meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry. I've been doing that all day. Alright, everyone seeing pictures? Mm-hmm, okay, so pictures we had last time, this entire front yard was bare dirt. Um, it's now sodded, there's a couple patches that probably need to be replaced, but it's it's holding. Um, and you can see the erosion controls are intact, um. Slope in the back. Uh, and then over by the driveway areas, kind of the areas that still, and along the front of the house, that still need a little bit of stabilization, um. But as you can see, it doesn't look like anything fresh really is entering the roadway, and definitely not the catch basin as it has uh inlet protection um installed. So again, I don't know, do you want, do you want me to run right into the recommendations? You wanna see if the contractor has any comments?
Yeah, why don't we hear from the contractor, you spent some time here waiting, so uh why don't we hear from, from him at this point? Where is yours, sir?
If you can unmute, Brent.
Yes, Jamie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Brent Juniver of BMD Escavation. Yes, so we've so far put down, we brought in fresh top slail, graded it, and put down twenty thousand square feet of sod, as you saw, and the homeowner has ordered a third load of ten thousand, which is coming Tuesday to pretty much cover the rest of any disturbed areas, so as Jamie mentioned, yeah, everything's been holding up well, I I actually stopped by there today, I could see you were there. I noticed the two hay bales, obviously it looked like a car had hit the two that I had on top of the basin, I repositioned those this evening. And only, and uh because we had a small rain event, I just ran by the pond to see if that changed at all, and it's still the same as it looked yesterday and whatnot, but um, just a lot of allergy of stagnant water at this point, but I feel pretty confident that everything's holding up well, and hopefully we'll get just enough rain to get this sod to take well, which he has irrigation as well to maintain it, so we've come a long way in a s- short period of time, so um, we're gonna keep all the erosion control on until everything is probably, I would say, until spring at this point, you know, just to be safe. Any questions for me?
Uh, appreciate the uh quick turnaround.
Thanks.
Alright, so Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, um I think obviously the next big step we're waiting for is the results of the water testing for the flocculent material. Um, so and then in addition to that, the commission had also requested a recommendation for an appropriate monitoring timeframe to ensure that the project works as intended, and I'm assuming also so that it can be assessed that there's been no side effects, unanticipated side effects from the application. I guess the question I have for the commission is, um, I'm assuming that you would want to review that material um, rather than I guess the question is, do you wanna review that material hopefully at the next meeting? Um, if it's available, or we're, or do you want staff to review it to try and expedite the process and prevent delays in the application? Um, we haven't had a whole lot of we haven't had use of flocculent material while I've been here, so I'm assuming the commission wants to review that, but
The, this is Commissioner.
I think it's, go ahead, Dave.
Um, I I I think at this stage of the game, I think the applicant has um shown um that they're willing to do what's necessary to make things right uh for both properties, not just theirs, but their uh the property that was affected by this. Um, I see that the uh controls are still in place, and um I think at this stage of the game, unless Jamie, if any bells really come off with the um, with the report coming back, um, I think we can probably just leave it in Jamie's lap to monitor at this stage of the game. Um, they said that they were gonna do certain things, and they did say what they were gonna do. They did do what they were supposed to do.
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, so one thing I I kind of just wanna throw out there for consideration is that this order is still kind of open-ended, and order is, remains in effect until the commission makes a decision on the order. So to that end, um, I think it kind of follows up on it making sense for the commission to review that material, because the commission's gonna have to make a decision on that order, so that way the recipients of the order know the exact game plan for resolution to the order and getting it completely closed out and done, so um.
The other thing is that this, this is something relatively new, and therefore the information would be helpful to the commission, everybody to understand how a flocculent can be used, and and we may have applications going forward for this, so I I'm 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 hopeful that we can review that at the next meeting.
This is Commissioner Boda, I couldn't agree more, uh I I think that it's a good opportunity for continuing education for the commission, and um anytime we get something um, unique like this, I think it is really helpful for us and our experience and our knowledge base.
Um, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I might suggest kind of an open-endedness in the continuation of the show cause hearing to either the let's see if I can get the dates right, October tenth or October twenty fourth meeting, whichever one is earlier and the results of the flocculent water testing are available for review. Um, cause I don't think that we need to make them come October tenth, if they don't have the results, I would imagine they hopefully will, but if, if they don't, there's no point in checking in at this point that I can think of.
Agreed.
Yes, Brent Juniver, BMD, I'm sorry, um. I know the homeowners are ha- you know, they're about to get married and would love to get permitting and everything being stabilized, I I understand the fact that it'd be great for you guys to get educated and us as well, but being this already stabilized, is it possible to at least let them move forward with some remodeling within the house at this point?
Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, as I mentioned at the last meeting, this isn't holding up any other permitting.
Okay, that's good to hear, okay.
Anything else on this?
Yeah, so I just wanna check, uh, so for that next meeting, is there any additional information the commission wants aside from the proposed flocculent material that's to be used? And a monitoring regime, regime for after the implementation of the flocculent.
I I get, this is Commissioner Boda, I guess I'm I'm wondering if part of that plan is going to articulate goals and the the timeframe for turbidity um in that water body. I I think that that would be really helpful um to know what what our baseline is currently. Um, what their goal is, and um the, the, I guess, benchmarks to get there.
Uh, was that addressed to me, um? I'm assuming as, until we get test results back, we really don't have any plan in place, um.
That that would be part, that would be part, uh, that's not something that you would have right now, that would be part of the plan that comes forward.
Right.
Um, is that that, you know, we we need a baseline number, um so turbidity measured in NTUs. Um, and so anybody who's doing that kind of testing um could provide that data and then ha- and then provide targets for um gold turbidity, and then what are some, using the flocculent, like how are we gonna measure success? Um, with that flocculum, where do we expect the turbidity to be following that application?
Right, right, yeah, that would be up to them, I'm not familiar with any of that science, so.
Yeah, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, I would expect that to come from George Logan.
Right.
And I know we touched base on that a little bit last time, so I I will follow up with every, all the parties regarding the discussion from this evening and what's expected for when we're continuing discussion, um. And like I said, I'd I'd probably suggest keeping that open-ended, just so that we're not making everyone come if if they're not ready for October tenth.
Okay.
So is show cause hearing is being continued to October tenth or October twenty fourth, whichever meeting the materials are available for?
Correct, yes, correct, we'll we'll reach out to you, Jamie, and let you know as soon as we hear. So we can get on or off your docket for that night, so as soon as we hear something, we'll get in touch.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Perfect. Thank you, commission.
You're welcome. T-Seg correct twenty four oh nine oh two, one seventy-one eighty-two, Leach Island Road, clearing and earth disturbance without a permit. Again, a continuation of a show cause hearing, uh, Jamie, you don't stay the party present.
Get on.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wetland Agent, um yeah, just for clarification, is there anyone present this evening for this item? Alright, um. So I did reach out to the property owner, uh, as I mentioned at the last meeting, the address was mailing address was the same as the fiscal address, which is an undeveloped lot, so I was a little bit hesitant as to whether or not the order was received. Order was received by the property owner, after the last meeting, I sent the order also to the. Um, agent for the LLC, um, I did get a call from the property owner. Um, and have discussed the fact that we need to meet onsite and that he needs to hire a soil scientist. Uh, he was not feeling well, so, um. I suggested, you know, hopefully we can schedule something for next week and that in the interim, he should work on trying to hire a soil scientist, um. To do. The investigation requested in the order, um. So I can quickly outline what has happened and what I'm looking for. And ultimately, I think my recommendation at this point would be. For an onsite meeting with myself and the property owner at the minimum prior to the next meeting. And ideally, a meeting with myself, the owner and the hired soil scientist to start going over. The required. Information, um.
Is is it more beneficial for the commission to hear that after you've had the meeting or?
If you don't wanna go over it right now and you wanna give give it until the next. Month when hopefully we've got productive steps, that's that that works for me is. Um, I do think that there. Should be, I I thi- I think that we're. At a point though where we do wanna make sure that this is being followed up on in a timely manner, so I do think. Um, I don't know if the commission wants me to send a follow-up letter basically stating, um. That we need to have that onsite meeting prior to October tenth, um, or else the commission may look to. Um. Escalate, I don't, I mean, m- may look to, um, take further enforcement action. Something to kind of help move things along and make sure he understands that this is not something that's gonna go away. So an update letter saying we need to meet onsite prior to the next meeting, which is when the show cause has been continued to, which is October tenth. Is that correct and fair?
Works for me.
Alright, sounds good.
He's incorrect, twenty-four oh nine oh three, twenty Huntington Drive, greeting and vegetation removal. Uh, within a hundred feet of a wetland, wetland, this is the show cause hearing. Again, oh, uh, Jamie, can you bring this for us? This has been around, uh, not so much.
Uh, Jamie Frederick and the Wentland agent, um, I. Received a phone call that there was activity going on at twenty Huntington, um, I have the property owner's. Contact information, so I called him to inquire. Um, met him onsite and I told him to stop doing any further work, install erosion controls. And, um. That he needed to stabilize the disturbed area. This seeding season, um, and I. I told him that he should plan to submit an application for what he wants to do in the area. Um, essentially, he has cleared the under. Story layer, um, which consisted a lot of mugwort. Um, but also in doing so has completely disturbed the soil and has kind of been regrading a little bit, um. So on this one, I'm, I think my biggest concern is that the area that erosion controls are installed, number one, and number two, that the area is stabilized. Um, ideally, this. Seeding season if possible, it's like an annual ride or something, um. To kind of help hold soil in place while he's coming up with a plan, um. The activity extends at its closest point thirty feet from the wetlands, which was, uh. Blagged couple times over the last couple of years and um conservation signs were installed, so I measured from the conservation sign. Um, like I said, it was about thirty feet, um. Just screen share real quick so you guys can see what it looks like, as you can see, there's definitely ground disturbance. Some of this was or, most of this material was already here, um, it is piled up against trees. I didn't talk about that with the property owner, um. It probably will kill the trees if it stays there, um, so I don't know if you want me to expand. On things to tell him that this material should be removed, um. So. I guess, long story short, um, I have not heard back from the property owner, however, I did. Get an email shortly before our meeting from uh a contractor that he worked with previously on another. Part of his site, um, about what he needs to do to resolve this, so. Again, I think the main thing is getting those erosion controls installed. Getting this area seeded at least in a temporary standpoint and then submitting an application for whatever it is. He's looking to do here, cuz at this point, like. I think I I think an application is appropriate, um, I don't think that it, that activity he has done. Um. Needs drastic remediation beyond stabilizing it. Um, and protecting the wetland area, um, there is also a dead tree, I believe it's this one right here. Um, that he is looking to remove, so this is the thirty feet and grading areas over here. And this is the dead tree, um. So again, I said that should be part of the application, um. So I don't know how the commission wants to proceed, do you wanna?
Maybe where, where. Where, where is the, those, those trees that have all the soil piled up on top of them? What is their proximity to the wetland?
Let's see, I don't think I threw a G I S map in here, of course not, um.
I mean, you can, you know what, let me, let me rephrase that. Uh, again, this is Commissioner Bota, so if those trees are, uh. Within, I don't know, tw- twenty feet or thirty feet to the wetland and or are providing shade. To the wetland, I would say that the soil needs to come off of them post haste very quickly. Um, so that the, they are not killed, um. But, uh, yeah, uh, other than, and so if we're looking at it. And impact to wetlands, I would say pull, pull that soil off of the trees, otherwise we can wait to deal with it. Until there's an application.
Okay, so that would, so thirty feet is probably around where this wood is. Um, and that's about where the piling starts.
So, so then I would say, yeah, pull, pull that, pull that back.
Probably around where this tree is straight back, um. It pitches this way and then it kind of pitches the other way, so I guess. Would it be fair to say anything from the hot, local high point towards the wetland?
Yeah.
This Commissioner Pat Antonis, I have a question, um. We've dealt with this person before, haven't we?
Yes.
And, uh, was it on this property or was it on a different property?
This property.
Okay, is, my recollection is that, um. He, this was a long fight. And or not fight, but, um, we had a hard time getting him to come to meetings in the past. Deal with the other issues. My, am I misrep- am I misremembering or am I correct with that?
Um. It, it, the, this property has been on the commission's agenda quite a bit over the last couple of years, um, so. Part of the reason why issued a cease and correct order is cuz there's immediate action that needs to occur, such as the installing of erosion controls and stabilizing the soil. But also to make sure we're starting off with, this is important and it needs to happen and it needs to happen now, um. And like I said, I did get an email from the contractor, so I will follow up with them tomorrow, um, received it after, you know. Couple hours before the meeting, so I figured I might as well just wait until this conversation has happened, um. So at this time, does the commission wanna review the order and make a determination on the order? Or do you want me to follow up on the things we've discussed about getting erosion controls installed? Removing the soil pad up against the trees within the area that drains toward the wetland. Um, and getting the area temporarily stabilized, with the understanding that an application will be submitted for long term.
Jamie, Commissioner Gocowski, one quick question, you mentioned that there was a dead tree that they wanted to take down. Is it in close proxen- proximity of the the structure or is it more closer to the wetlands?
Um, I think it's pretty much in the middle, I think that that tree. Is probably pretty close to a hundred feet away from the wetland, I'm not really worried about that tree being removed. Um, I kind of would rather he address that tree rather than later on address the tree and. Other trees around it. Um, I, so I think, you know, being clear about the limits of what is happening, um.
This is Commissioner Bassman, Jamie, do you give him a date by which those erosion controls have to be installed?
Hmm, this is the wrong order, one minute. Uh, I gave him until September twentieth, I I sent him a follow-up email, I believe this morning. Um, and I did not hear back about inspecting the erosion controls, so at this point, I do not know if the erosion controls have been installed. Um, and it's past the date that I gave him, uh, cuz he had mentioned, I met with him last Friday, um. Oh, wait, no, I met with him, twentieth is when I met with him, I gave him until Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, and I've not heard from him, um. So in that follow-up letter, I could give him. Another deadline for getting the erosion controls installed.
Is it, uh? Is it viewable from the road as to whether the erosion controls are put in or not?
No. I could, um, indicate that the erosion controls need to be installed. By a certain date and inspected by a certain date or else fines will be issued, um.
I I guess that's kind of where I'm leaning. Uh, given as Commissioner Papitone is, uh, mentioned that this is. You know, been back and forth to this commission any number of times, uh, I'm not sure we. Need to hesitate, um, in taking appropriate action.
Commissioner Pat Antonis, I think we've been ignored before, I think we need to make him know that we're not fooling.
Yeah, um, so I can give him. Let me just look at the weather real quick. Hmm, of course, I don't have that. I wanna give him enough time that by the time he gets the order or the updated letter, he he has some time to react to it, um. Although the citation process also gives him an extra two days to get it done before he actually gets cited, so, um.
We, we meet on the.
I could give, I mean, I could send the letter out tomorrow, I've got his email address, I've got his phone number, um, and I could give him until Wednesday, um. And if it's not done by end of business day on Wednesday, I'll be sending that citation.
Okay.
Um.
Anybo- anybody feel differently?
No.
No.
Anything else on this?
So does the commission wanna review the and make a decision on the order or do you wanna continue the order to the? October tenth, or, yeah, October tenth meeting.
That would be my goal.
Continue.
Yes.
Alright, and I'll also follow up on the landscaper. About what the commission's looking for.
I'm sorry, say that again, Jamie.
Uh, I will also respond to the lan- the landscaper that contacted him about what the commission is looking for.
Okay, we have a application for receipt inland went in twenty-four, four oh nine oh three, five ten oh drive. Twenty thousand square foot building with associated site improvements. Uh, it's an application for receipt. Uh, anything of note on on this, Jamie?
Jamie Frederick and the Wentland agent, keep it pretty quick, we do have a representative present. Um, I didn't indicate to the applicant that the commission might wanna do a site walk for this application, so I think that's the main thing I'm requesting the commission to consider this evening. Um, they did submit it a week prior to the meeting, so they do have the opportunity to give a brief five to ten minute presentation based on our revised guidelines. Um, there's a sewer line kind of near the wetland, which I understand the, um. Wastewater Department will be, um. Clearing probably tomorrow, so that would help with access if the commission wanted to do a site walk. To be able to see the purp- the wetland area and approximate. Stormwater area, um, and if we are setting a site walk, letting the applicant know what the commis- what you might wanna see marked in the field. Understanding that it is an undeveloped site and right now, um. There is an interior portion of the site that was cleared previously and it's very dense, Japanese knotweed, so, um. Certain parts of the site are gonna be a little bit difficult to access, so with the, I would rambling on, I'll hand it over to the applicant.
Uh, Jeremy Gannon from Criscolo Engineering, share my screen here, I'll give a quick brief, uh. Summary of this thing. Alright. Can you guys all see that?
Yep.
So, property right here, um, it's roughly about three and a half acres long, uh, it's located in the IG two zoning district. Uh, the topography runs from west to east and. The inland wetlands line runs along the eastern uh boundary of the property. Um, so. Here's their intention and, uh, it's gonna be a twenty thousand square foot, uh, commercial building located here, uh. Once again, the, you know. The inland wetland area will be along here and we get into the grading. Uh, this is kind of what we're imagining and. Pretty much from the roof area and the parking area, everything will be, uh. All the storm runoff will be directed through a series of catch basins that'll be. Rerouted through an oil water separator over here and then make its way down to this large, uh, retention basin, um. After that, it would then again be, uh, dissipated through here and trickle down. Over here that butts the inland well and over there, so that would be. Kind of up your guys' alley and, uh. Yeah, that's pretty much what I got for you.
This is Commissioner Bassman, on the east side of the. Uh, building, I guess, uh, the parking lot to the retention basin. What's that slope?
That's all three to one, yep.
All three to one, okay.
It's three to one and our intention is to stay out of that easement, obviously, over here, uh, the sewer easement. Yeah, and I know, uh, engineering has sent some, uh, comments already, uh, we plan to have those addressed. On the actual public hearing, uh, date, but. It's what we got so far, so.
This is Commissioner Bota, is there a water course on the eastern side? I see the wetland flags, but just having been.
There's a ton, actually, if I switch over here, uh, the G I S, so if we're, we're here, I don't know. Looks like there's a tiny bit of a stream or something here, but this whole property back here is, it's heavily, uh, inland wetlands.
Jamie Frederick and the Wentland agent, there is a water course through, uh, there's a main water course through that wetland complex. I don't believe it's. Very close to that property line, but I can look in our files to see if I have any additional information on that for the commission's review.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the commission? Jamie, you indicated, uh, you. Jamie, you indicated that you you felt the site walk would be uh helpful?
I I think this is typically the kind of site where commission the commission considers a site walk um. Alternatively, if commissioners feel they can do a drive-by and that satisfies their curiosity. But like I said, I do believe that that sewer easement is gonna be um cleared, so that would. Give the commission access to kind of view that wetland area pretty nicely um. So it's up to the commission. I will say that I am likely away the first weekend in October, so I would request, if possible, to do it a weekday. But. That's also if the commission wants to do it.
Is your suggestion to do it the day of the? Tenth, but earlier on the tenth or some other day during the week?
Uh personally, I like to do it a different day than the meeting cuz I have to get everything set up in the office and make sure I've got all the files in the right places. Um but we've done it before and I made it work, so it depends on your availability. Usually, the commission does it. The week of the meeting or the the weekend or the Thursday before the meeting.
Uh this is Commissioner Bota. I mean, I I I do think it's a site we can probably see. We can access pretty well from Sycamore and from Pin Oak Drive um. If we were to do a site walk, I would have more flexibility on a Saturday um. Thursdays are already jammed as are Wednesdays and Tuesdays. But don't set the site walk based on me.
Well, we should set the site walk based on commissioners cuz if commissioners aren't going to attend, there's no point in having one. Um and Saturday is possible, either I could make it work or um potentially could have Katie go or um. Just so that we can have minutes.
Are we talking about October fifth?
That works for me.
This is Commissioner Gokowski. I will be out of town on the fifth.
Jamie, this is Katie. I can do the fifth.
The other option is we could do it potentially this Saturday if that's going to work for the applicant, just hand a short notice.
Yeah, I'd have to talk to uh Mr. De Mayo, but I could probably try to call him tomorrow and see if that's possible.
Um any thoughts that maybe this Saturday is going to be very rainy? I mean, it's a great time to see a wetland and a water course, but uh.
And also in case they don't get out there tomorrow and it's Monday or Tuesday of next week, it might be good to give them some extra time.
The the fifth and ten o'clock meeting?
Sounds good.
Anything else on this?
Uh Jamie Frederick and the wetland agent, just a point of clarification. Um I think there was mention of hearing earlier. Uh the commission may wanna determine whether or not a public hearing is warranted on this. I don't think you have to determine that this evening um.
Is there, this is Commissioner Bota. Did I miss something? Is there a fill proposed?
No, no. Uh the this isn't one where I would say the commission would typically have a public hearing, but I wouldn't necessarily say it was. Completely atypical, but um there's no filling over the stormwater.
I was just wondering what the driver would for a public hearing would be.
Uh the stormwater outlet is very close to the wetland boundary um, so. Again, there's three three reasons the commission might have a public hearing. Um one is if the commission receives a petition requesting a public hearing within a lot of timeframe. One is if the commission determines it's in the public's best interest, which is pretty broad. Um and three is if the commission has a finding, makes a finding that the activity. Proposed activity may have a significant impact on wetlands or water courses um.
I I think we reserve judgment until the site walk.
Yeah, I I don't think I don't think that it falls into an obvious category, so I I think it makes sense to hold off. Um and or uh I I I don't think it defaults to it, so. But there was mention of a hearing, so in case anyone's wondering, does that mean we're having a hearing? Um not necessarily, however, it's always something the commission can consider.
Yeah, I'm I'm a little concerned, you know. If all of a sudden our our default becomes a public hearing, uh we may have more public hearings than uh fit the bill. Um in terms of the criteria, so. Okay. Any other business? Says none? No correspondence and announcements?
The um Jamie, Katie, this is Commissioner Bota. I I saw the piece for SIPWIG. And um I need to confirm I can get coverage, but I think I'd like to register for that. Uh confirm tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be good because I I already did the check request, but it's not gonna go out till next week, so if you could let me know, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And um this is the last call for Kakiwick as well, so if anybody wants to register for Kakiwick, please let me know by tomorrow.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
This program was brought to you in part through the support of the town of Branford. Watch town meetings and other videos on demand at branfordtv.org.